I have seven o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Are we recording? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Present.
Here.
Aye.
Here.
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 Here. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under one God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Thank you. Items to be added to the agenda? I see none. Appearance of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to three minutes or less for council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only during that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, staff and council may choose to ask questions or comment following the conclusion of citizens comments. Andrew Gotlieb?
My name is Andrew James Gotlieb. I live at... Well, I'm not living there, but this is my current address, 443 North Douglas.
Andrew, would you mind speaking up just a little bit?
My name is Andrew James Gotlieb. My current address is 443 North Douglas in Cottage Grove. This week on the trail, just wanted to share this moment of children first. I ran into a 13-year-old boy who was packing alcohol in his backpack, asked me if I wanted a drink, with his 16-year-old sister. He told me he'd ran away from home because he was getting beat up by his dad. She told me she's already been in sex trafficking after he said she sells herself $60 an hour. And now she has what's called a sugar daddy, which is basically another term for pimp. And she confidentially told me she doesn't want to do it, but she doesn't have any choice. They both run away from home. I don't even know who their parents are, what their last names are. Getting worse every day, more prevalent. But, uh, second topic. I want to address theft in Cottage Grove. I mean, I don't know if anybody's experienced it like I have, but it pretty well seems like an organized plot to defuse any mannerism that I could have of digging my way out of the hole with intelligence, skills, traits, arts, any... I mean, I have many talents and skills. But when all of your equipment and all of your tools and all of your sanctity have been stolen from you repeatedly... I mean, it really began a long, long time ago, but it's gotten worse since I started coming to city council meetings. I just had my last guitar stolen from me the other day. That's four in the last three weeks. On Douglas, they completely whipped the tarp off the top of my tent. I never told anybody I was moving out, period. Somebody spread a rumor that I was moving out and they can take whatever they want. Not a single person has told me anything about anybody who's done anything. They ruined everything they could by pulling the tarp off. At post camps, I have... I failed to be able to set up a tent with poles and a tarp over it. If I got a tent up, they stole the poles. If I got a tent and a tarp, they'd take the poles, you know? I got a tent and the poles up, they took the tarp. I'd go to get a tarp and they'd take the poles. They told me I couldn't have a spot behind Dairy Mark, yet they've let four or five people into the places they said it wasn't okay to have people sit in. The only place I had to flee was over there in the bushes by Walmart underneath the freeway. And it only took a few days for people to tear that place apart and make it a complete bracket there. And then Odak came through a few days ago and said that whoever's stuff it is needs to get it out because they're going to take a brush hog and clear it all the way up to the next exit, which is understandable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online? No, okay. Public hearings? I see none. Consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion with a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. On the following action items, an opportunity for citizen comments may be provided after the staff report and prior to council discussion on each item, except on items for which public hearing was or is scheduled to be held. Citizen comment, time on each action item will not exceed 30 minutes. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person or less with council approval. Comments must be specific item and cannot be used for additional discussion of other action items on the agenda. We don't have anyone signed up. Item seven. Resolutions and ordinances. A resolution in support of an application for Rural Opportunity Initiative grant through business organ to foster a robust rural entrepreneurial community. Staff report by Mr. Mongan.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As discussed at Friday morning's agenda session, staff has found a grant that would fit a good place in our plan under the retail market analysis that was performed by Market Tech earlier this year. Staff is here with a resolution, seeking your support in that application process. Available to answer questions if you haven't.
Nothing added.
Anyone have questions? Counselor Mary Day?
It's not a question. It's a resounding vote of support that we proceed with this and especially seek funding for a full-time professional to guide the downtown development process. Thank you.
Counselor Irvin? Counselor Irvin, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to also reiterate that I think we've needed a dedicated economic development position for some time. So for overall, certainly the downtown, but in looking at all of the spaces that we have available and ideas. So I fully support going for this initial step. I know that the grant isn't going to be an indefinite funding, but that we also be looking at implementing that position long-term.
Do we have a resolution number? Counselor Irvin?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I would move that the council adopt Resolution Number 2118, which is in support of the city's application for funding to the Business Organ Rural Opportunity Initiative Grant Program.
Second.
We have a motion with a second?
Yeah, I guess I was gonna, with my motion, also offer my full hearted support. Also with... I also hope that we can fund this in the long term. So, thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Business from the City Council. Item A. Housing Development Cost Assistance Program Review. Staff report by Mr. Boon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. For back in 2020, you passed Resolution 2001, creating the Housing Development Cost Assistance Program. That resolution included a requirement to be due after three years. We are now after three years. Your review is in the memo. If anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer what I can.
Anyone have questions?
I'll just make a quick comment. Yes, I'm thrilled that we have this opportunity available. It's just one more tool in the toolbox to try to get affordable housing. So I certainly am thrilled that we're doing this and hoping that we can get some applicants this year.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on. Concerns from council. Counselor Flack?
Well, so I guess just quickly, I mentioned this Friday at our agenda session, but the Lain Area Commission on Transportation, of which I'm appointed. We've always only appointed one person, but apparently they are putting alternates in for everybody's. Whether we do that sooner or later in the next round, we should have an alternate spot for that position as well. The next item I'd like to talk about is the League of Oregon Cities Conference. As I've mentioned, I think before, I probably only go to these every other year because a lot of the information seems to be kind of a rehash from previous years. This conference, however, was excellent. There was a lot of really good content that was really... I was really thrilled that I went. First item I went to was a council's work session on Thursday, October 12. It's about, you know, basically how to build a thriving organization, key takeaways, you know, working to get better as a team, working with a purpose, building successful relationships. That was right out of their text, but it was good. Next was encouraged in needed housing. Interesting, the cities they referenced in doing a really good job on this. Cottage Grove was one of those cities. They actually talked about our MPT and, you know, zone changes and whatnot as kind of a model for other cities. So I was actually kind of glad to be there just to hear the, you know, praise on that. There was a keynote speaker, and I'm sorry, I'm probably taking a little of your thunder away, so I apologize. Bill Strickland was a keynote speaker that day. Wow, was this powerful. This is a guy from Pittsburgh in a very low-income area who just raised millions and millions of dollars working with the poor. And just to hear him, you know, with his just can-do and, you know, I'm not going to stop attitude and some of the just incredible facilities this man built. It was really, really inspiring. On Friday, I went to Conflict Styles and Collaborative Governance, where they talked about the Thomas and Killman Assessment, TKI Assessment. I've done Myers-Briggs in the past, which is more about your preferences and to leadership geeks. This is kind of cool stuff, and the rest of you, please be patient. But they talked about competing, accommodating, avoiding, collaborating, and compromising. And just so you guys all know, I'm 100% compromiser and 82% collaborator. So it's kind of interesting because all are value assets. But I thought that that was kind of cool doing the assessment. Um, let's see. So we also did, and I'm just kind of highlighting here, HR professionals. What the HR professionals wish their elected officials knew. It was actually really interesting and some key things that I learned and probably going to try to implement in my agency is onboarding and exit interviews. So onboarding, basically, a set regiment for new employees so that you can really make sure that they're getting the key pieces of what your organization stands for, your goals. And then, of course, all of the regular sorts of HR things you talk about. Interesting observation, they had talked about the HR director actually being involved in your city manager evaluations, which we in Cottage Grove have never done. And the questions came up, does that make it awkward with the employee of the manager being involved? But I think you've done well. I would actually, you know, think we should maybe look at doing that in the future. But that, of course, is, you know, remains to be seen. Uh, let's see. So violence in council meetings was actually really interesting. It was a little scary. They showed actually video of people coming into a school board meeting and actually shooting at the members. It was actually a little traumatic to sit there and watch. And I don't know, I think you were in that meeting, that session as well. Very hard to watch. And it talked about lots of things to do to make sure that you're safe, including de-escalation, training kind of some of the how to deal with that sort of situation. So that was, that was actually very fascinating. So here's the key kind of piece I got from this session that I shared with all of the council. So there was a session called Three Top Legal Issues Facing Cities. The highlight of that was a case called Duncan versus Portland. So interesting enough, Portland has a dusk-to-dawn program. And it is now being challenged as not being objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner. This is what House Bill 3115, the core piece of the legislation that was passed to codify Martin versus Boise and what became Johnson versus Grass Pass. So it's kind of interesting that, you know, basically, some of the key points on that is that not everybody sleeps at the same time. They may have jobs that actually work into hours that would be in the time that they're allotted to sleep. No possession, place to store possessions. Folks may have a disabling condition and not be able to do that. Now, there were some differences, of course, in the way Portland did it, and I'm sure... And this has not been resolved, by the way. So Portland enacted this, but has not actually implemented it. So there was also an injunction to basically, you know, hold it off until the court case was resolved. That was denied because they actually have not implemented it. So this is ongoing. This hasn't been resolved. But it does show that this is not yet finished in the courts as far as the ultimate determination. But at this point, this puts some question into whether dusk-to-dawn is actually going to, you know, stand the test of the courts. So another key piece of that was another case, which I thought was Phoenix, Oregon. It looks like it was actually Phoenix, Arizona. And actually, that was an interesting one where they also, like Portland, let people stay on sidewalks and they would have an accumulation of stuff. And they, their business community folks actually sued, saying that they were not implementing their own nuisance codes. So it was kind of an interesting one. It's actually more geared towards the, you know, we still have the House Bill 3115, so the outcome of that is not quite the same, but it was interesting from the other side of the facts. So, you know, with that, I'll kind of go into, you know, this advertisement that was in The Chronicle a couple of weeks ago, or last week, I guess. You know, it's kind of interesting because this flyer is actually false in many ways. And I just feel it's important to call that out in a public meeting. You know, one of the key pieces, it talks about it allows dusk-to-dawn. Well, clearly, that is not necessarily the case. And I'm not going to go into the other pieces, but it does say that I'm asking to revisit this. You know, I had said that any suggestions that had merit, that met the law, that I would be interested in entertaining. This is not a, I'm willing to revisit this. I will do it, you know, in the best interest of our city as long as I sit here. I'm hoping to do that. And I think that when we, as I hear that the signatures have been turned in today, I think it's going to be really interesting for the folks to defend that the main reason they're trying to throw us out now is in question as far as its legality. So I'm frustrated by this. The recall's supposed to be about people who've done something wrong. They actually allege that we're wasting money here as far as the city manager, interim city manager, which is less than what we would have been paying our city manager if he'd been sitting here. So once again, also not true. And you're going to have to defend a position that now is legally questionable. So like I said, I'm frustrated because this is going to sow hate and malcontent. This is going to cost the city money, and it's frustrating to me. So I want to say that. Obviously, I support, you know, the voters having a say, but I believe the recall should be for somebody who's done something wrong. Somebody who's broken the law, somebody who has, you know, really risen to the level of they need to be removed before the next election. So I'm going to stop there and thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Ms. Satch?
Thank you, Mayor Solzben. I also have notes from the League of Oregon Cities Conference. It was absolutely incredible. I'd also like to give a shout out to Mandy Beeler. Did I say that right? Our HR manager attended an HR workshop, and we didn't give you credit for that. And so I want to say thank you for attending the classes that you attended. I love drinking from a fire hose. I love getting all the information and data. And I try and take as many notes as I can. So with my eight pages here, I'm not going to read them all, but I highlighted a couple of things with the council's workshop on Thursday morning with Ron Holyfield, who's a CEO and now public speaker and does a lot of municipal education. He says, "We are in a world where elected officials are expected not to think, but to obey. Obey the ones who pay the most and obey the ones that are the loudest." So it's really discouraging that this has become commonplace when folks who are elected are elected to be able to speak and not to obey. Diversity produces better decisions. We need to protect the integrity of the process. Council is here to decide the what, and city staff is to figure out the how. It is not negative for a citizen to advocate for what they want, but it can be negative to believe that their special interest request speaks for everyone. So moral ground comes from holding your own team accountable. And healing will only come to the national level when we can heal at our local level first. So those were a lot of the notes that I wrote. As he was speaking, there's a lot, he had a wonderful handout. There were lots of notes I took from his handout. Fifteen strategies to effective rational leadership, such as know what you know before acting like you know what everybody else knows you don't know. Does that make sense? I'll say that again. Know what you know before acting like you know what everyone else knows that you don't know. Walk the talk of a genuinely humble spirit. Know yourself. Listen more. Talk less. Ask good questions. Know the structure and the process. Know the dynamics influencing the issues. Develop your position thoughtfully. Develop your position with integrity. Deliver it with integrity. Communicate your goals and priorities clearly. Act with courage. Lose gracefully. Win gracefully. Build trust consistently. He also includes 12 behaviors of trust-based leadership. I'm not going to read all 12 because there's a paragraph with each one, but this will go into public record, so if you're interested in that, you can look it up later. I took a tour for some unhoused shelters and affordable housing. The first space we visited was at Garfield Sleep, a safe sleep site, which is run by St. Vincent's DePaul in Lane County. It opened in February of 2022. Some highlights are that they have 24-hour staffing, seven days a week. Possessions must fit within two storage totes. Each tent has its own heater plus a pellet stove in the common space. Tents and hots are inspected three times a day for safety. This is in a big privately-owned warehouse where there's, I believe, 83 different 10-by-10 tents that have walls on them to allow for privacy, but like this says, they are inspected. Case management services are provided by St. Vincent's DePaul. The site stays full because there's a long waiting list to get in. The cost for this is $45.33 per bed per night. And then we also toured a community-supported shelter. Each community member must respect the safety for one another. They need to refrain from using alcohol and drugs while on premises. They need to respect the quiet hours, attend monthly work parties to help with camp improvements, and working with firewood processing and/or community outreach. So absolutely two different sites. It's amazing to see what other communities are doing. These are obviously not low-barrier shelters, so they can be a little bit more restrictive on what they allow in. But it's just fascinating. There's a space for everything. Obviously, these are run by nonprofits and not... They're, I believe, they're partnered with the city, but they're not run by us. So our keynote, Bill Strickland, is phenomenal. I just could not get enough of him. I loved meeting him in person and greeting him, shaking his hand. He had like a double lung transplant seven years ago. He's just an amazing human. In Philadelphia, Philadelphia?
Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh. So in Pittsburgh, where he first started his first school, he went in a poor neighborhood and built this beautiful building. And there's another document that I've submitted into public record, and it has photos of all of these different buildings that he's now been a part of, but that this first original one is in there, so if you want to go look at that. It's just absolutely gorgeous. So he has 14 national schools here in the states. He's got three that are international. Hops up on stage and he just says, "You folks make me feel that I belong here." You know, just full of gratefulness and gratitude and spreading that and just thankful. And he says, "If you treat people like humans, they may begin to see themselves like humans." Says he doesn't teach academics. He teaches motivation. The answer to poverty is poetry. Music is a language that we all speak. Oh, absolutely phenomenal, wonderful speaker. Friday morning, I took a tour to the Oregon Country Fairgrounds so that I could see their infrastructure. This is an absolutely fascinating space. One of the things that I learned is for the three days that the Oregon Country Fair is happening, there are 40,000 people on site. And so it was amazing hearing about how they partnered with the city of Benita and getting folks permitted and learning about their wastewater treatment system, their security and their infrastructure. Absolutely phenomenal. I also took the violence, being prepared for violence at a public meeting class. It was real happy, absolutely happy. There's lots of information about, you know, such as communication. 7% of communication is verbal. 93% of communication is not communicated by the spoken word. 70% of all communication is misunderstood. Effective communication is defined as passing information between one person and another that is mutually understood. One of the classes I was surprised I was going to get so much information about was making equity stick, city charter revisions, and other systemic changes. I had no idea I was going to be sitting on the edge of my seat as much as I did, but this was a fantastic class. Our charter is a living document. It was there before us. It's here because of us, and it will be here long after we are gone. This charter is our foundation. The buck stops here, per se. So just for your knowledge, our charter was last looked at in 2014. So it is time to look at our charter. So I would ask that that go onto our notes, to put onto communications to revisit, so that we can revisit our charter. If it's 10 years old, it's time to review. If there has, if there's gendered language, it is time to review. We can move to a more non-gendered document. If there's been governmental changes, such as allowing Zoom, we should put that... If there's been governmental changes, such as allowing Zoom, we should put that in there. Or if the charter itself has a timeframe to revisit it, we've passed that, it's time to revisit. So there's just so much information. I think that's probably all of the notes that I'll read. One of the conversations that I found absolutely amazing was talking with another counselor from Selette's, Oregon. And Selette's is teeny, teeny, tiny. It's just right outside of Toledo. And they were talking about working with their community care organization and getting funding for their unhoused site using the language that this is a community health problem. So I would like to ask that we talk to our local community care organization, which if I'm correct, it could be, we have two, Trillium and Pacific Source. So if we can talk to both of those to see if there's any sort of funding for a public health funding, that would be amazing for our folks that are unhoused. So I can help get you guys in touch with the counselor in Selette's who actually received this funding. They got somewhere with it. So I don't know how they did it, but I'm interested and I'd like to look at that. I'd also like to congratulate Charlie Conrad. So our local representative here was one of two representatives that were given an award at the League of Oregon Cities Annual Business Meeting. This is the North Star Award, which is based on the collective work of legislators related to the cities and answers the question, what legislator best represents the interests of the local communities? And he was one of two recognized in the state of Oregon. So, and he's ours. So congratulations, Charlie. That was absolutely amazing. I really look forward to meeting with him tomorrow. I think he's phenomenal. So I'll leave it at that. And these notes will be entered into public record and there's photos that go along with Bill Strickland's talk. So you can see these amazing spaces that he has built in places that are really, really poverty-stricken because everyone is worried. Everybody. So you have something else to say?
I just wanted to follow up. So our agency wrote a grant to Pacific Source and just received $256,000. Almost 222 of that will be going towards rent assistance.
That's fantastic. Counselor Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I just want to, I also attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference and I appreciated the opportunity to geek out about local government with other counselors, mayors, city managers. It was a really great nonpartisan educational event. I learned a lot and it just really drove home for me that a well, like professional civil discourse at the council level can really set the tone for your city as far as community and economic development.
Anyone else? Counselor Mary Day?
Just some things that'll be happening this week that will be of interest, I believe, to our citizens. Tomorrow at 6:00 in the Shepherd Room will be a discussion on housing and homelessness. On Wednesday, also in the community center, the Lane Workforce Council will be here trying to connect businesses and entrepreneurs with workforce members. So it'll be an excellent opportunity as well. On Thursday will be the dedication in drywall breaking of the federally qualified health center at the LCC campus, starting at 10:00 a.m. And then on Saturday, there's going to be a joint food drive to benefit the food pantry at Community Sharing by the three service clubs that are in town, the Kiwanis, the Lions, and the Rotary. So there was a move to work together to do something for the good of the community. And also, yes, it's my deep concern that we can come together as a community to do great things, to answer the housing, because there's so many people that are struggling, even elderly, people on fixed incomes, people living paycheck to paycheck, as well as unhoused. Housing is a huge thing in our future and will continue to grow and be so. So there's opportunities there and it's for us as a community to find them.
Counselor Plack?
I'm sorry to ask, it's a quick question. Maybe a show of hands on who plans on attending? I'm a little worried about having a quorum at that housing event tomorrow night. Because I was thinking about going, but we're going to have four, four counselors that would be coming.
Is it too late to declare the public meeting?
Yeah. It sounds like we have two so far.
I was considering going to.
That would still be three.
What if we sit apart and don't talk?
Well, the don't talk is kind of, okay.
Anyways. Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give an update on the status of, I guess, the Friends of the Cottage Grove Skate Park activities. We had a fun bingo night or afternoon on Sunday and just want to show appreciation for those that showed up and supported that, you know, for an event like that, 182, 50. It's not bad and helps. I thought it would be good to just kind of give an overview of where we are in the process because I don't know how long it's been, kind of been after this, but Counselor Mary Day had helped secure a $10,000 grant through the Yard Foundation for design work. And we're going down that path of, you know, looking at optimal locations to build a new site for a new site. And some opportunities came up where we're being, you know, shown things that kind of have broader and bigger ramifications, possibilities. And so we've kind of slowed down. There's, want to see what happens with the Special Recreation District because collaboration with that, the formation of that could mean, you know, a big, big shift in what could happen. So we haven't stopped. The goal is still to, you know, end up with a, what I would say, world-class skate facility, skate park here in Cottage Grove, something that could be an economic driver, could attract people from all over, but also would intrinsically welcome residents of all ages here to be a community interaction hub, place for activity. And so the energy is still being put into that. Appreciate collaboration with Counselor Mary Day on these events. And yeah, we'll come up with the next one, let you know about it, how to be involved. Wanted to just give that update. I would assume there's going to be maybe some follow-up on accusations of child sex trafficking going on here in Cottage Grove. So I'll look forward to hearing about that and case of child abuse. Absolutely want to hear what comes of that. And then I know it was related to the rural grant application, but, you know, haven't really seen what the consensus is on entertaining or seeing ordinance or something that can help curb blighted, at least commercial properties. But I'd be interested in seeing what kind of ramifications, you know, that would have if we put something in place at ordinance level, what impacts maybe other cities that have done it successfully. But, you know, we do have a number of properties that remain vacant and are dilapidated and that kind of pulls down interest in whole zones in Cottage Grove. Like to see, like to take initiative on this and really, you know, see some change brought about and some vitality, economic opportunity for the city. In addition, I know many others feel the same way. So I don't know what the consensus is on that, if you want to see that, but I'd certainly like to go down that road. I think that is it for me. Thanks.
I agree with Counselor Irvin on the blighted properties. However, I'd want to see it with some guidelines as far as if landowners are truly trying to lease and are just having a hard time finding suitable people for the space. I wouldn't want it to be a hardship on them. For those of you that come to council regularly, you see a new addition up here. And one of the complaints that we as a council and city administration used to get quite often is that people didn't, thought it was disrespectful for the city manager to have his back to the, his or her back to the audience. And so although I would love to take credit for this, I had nothing to do with it and I was surprised, as you were tonight, to see them up there, but I, but welcome. And I too went to the LOC conference and I have to say, this was my favorite conference and was nice only having to go 20 minutes to get there. I attended one of the classes that was about achieving grants for your city, which was timely because we're going after some grants, well, we're always going after grants. And city of Cottage Grove has been very successful with the grant writing process. But they were really going over some nice tricks of the trade and it was educational to me and a lot of the people here sitting out there already know a lot of the tricks of the trade, but it was nice information for myself to get. I also went to a creating vitality success in your current business, community, and how to attract new businesses and, which also segues right into the grant that we are applying for right now, trying to get somebody in that position of attracting new business and maintaining and what's right for our city. I would like to also say what an enormous impact I think that position can have on our city. So I'm grateful that we are going for that grant that's offered by Business Oregon. I just wanted to touch on the mayor's ball quickly. I knew, I know I had some people upset that I canceled it. It's normally October, November, but with everything on the city's plate right now, I thought that timing was bad for us to use any kind of city staff time to be arranging a mayor's ball. But I wanted to let you guys know that I'm officially not canceling it. I'm moving it back and so I'm thinking spring or maybe early summer. So Mindy was kind enough to get me some dates that might accommodate with the armory. I want to also remind everyone that October 31st, that the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting again in downtown instead of Bohemia Park. It's kind of nice that they go back and forth, our Halloween event, and that'll be from 3:00 to 6:00 and hope everyone joins us there. It's usually a very large success. I think we got, we had 2,000 children the last few years and it's pretty huge for our community. And that is it. So Business from the City Manager. Item A, Issue Tracker and Agenda Planning Calendar. Staff report by interim manager, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. If you don't mind, I'll probably try to combine my two items into one presentation. They sort of dovetail with each other. And I just want to thank you for moving the ball back. You must have heard just how bad a dancer I am and so I don't have to participate in that. So I will say, I was at League of Cities as well. I do have a 15-page report to read from here. Just kidding. And, you know, I did take the same exam that the council flex took and came back 100% back humor. So there you go. So getting to the, getting to the moment, so something on a tad more serious note, we did, we did receive the recall petition, the signatures this evening before the 5:00 p.m. deadline. So there won't be any further report until our elections officer, Mindy, has an opportunity to consult with the county to determine whether, you know, one, whether it meets the standards that's required at a recall petitions. And then two, if it does, if it goes for signature validation thereafter to the council. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So that's, that's all I can share with you at this point in time and that's all you'll get from us for a little while. So a couple of things that go under the heading of my role, my role as interim city manager for you is to help you with process. And so one of those, two of those things are identified and they're identified in a written report to you, and that's the proposed issue tracker and the proposed agenda planner. Those are coming to you. I've talked about those a little bit already. We picked up a couple of items tonight and I'm going to want to circle back at the end of this report to see if in fact you want those added on to the issue tracker. But largely, the issue tracker is in your packet, it's attached to the back of my report on this. And what it is, is a summary document that provides sort of a follow-up information for you and the public at large when they view the agenda packets, to see what we're working on, when we believe that we can get that information back to you, who's responsible that is to prepare. So by way of example, and I see that Mindy has given me a deadline, by way of example, the first item is the council rules. So that one I am, I am starting on. What I'm, I'm not going to try to recreate the way you're, you've done a lot of work on that already. What I will do is take the work you've done, the work that the city attorney has done and come back to you with a draft for you to consider in a future study session, whether that's council, the whole, or a committee of the council, you determine. But it's, let me, let me finish these, cutting a first draft for you to look at and present that to you and then you can decide what to do with it afterwards. So I will have that done by or before the November 13 deadline. I may have to lock my door when I go in the office. I will do that. There's a couple, there's another item on there. Frankly, I'm just, I will be looking for direction and we can talk about that towards the close of my staff report, but that is with respect to the community. Conversations come up a couple of times. As I mentioned to you on Friday, as long as there is a penalty of a recall, I don't think it's appropriate for staff to be involved in this or city resources to be involved in this until such time as that matters settled. One, there may be election law issues and two, there's just the parents' issues of a role that they may have. So I'm going to direct staff, at least until matters resolve one way or the other, that will be not participate in the conversation. So that'll be up to you, whether you want to, you know, subsequent to a closure of that conversation, how, if you want staff to be involved in that, if you still feel that's an important item. You talked tonight about a charter review, so again, I want to come back to you and find out if that is in fact a consensus of councils, remembering that this talking gets things added when it's a consensus or a vote of council, the majority, to add something to this, because you act as a council, not as individuals, just a reminder to that effect. This could come up from something that occurred during a public comment. We didn't have a lot, so I don't suspect a plan as a result of that. But also you had that item, you had an item with respect to whether you wanted staff to do further investigation on public health conversation you had with respect to the council from Selette's. So those are two things. I'll come back and see if that's of interest to the entire council. The other piece that I have in my packet, and again, this is about helping you with transparency, which I think is critical to any council of our union's success, so that everybody really is clear on what is being said, what is being promised, and that we are, you know, we have a level of responsibility and accountability on what we do for you as a staff and what you promise that we do, that we complete on your behalf. Moreover, this is an opportunity for you to, the other thing that I think is important to you, I know it's important to a lot of councils, is that you be able to complete your work timely and in the evening. So a lot of what I focus on in my, in my, and I'll talk to these items beyond the agenda planner, is how that you can manage your meetings in what I believe is a more effective manner, or at least, you know, to be not more effective than you've been. I think you do great work, but give you an opportunity to complete your work in a timely way in the evenings, while you still have the energy to do so and the mental strength to stick with it. I know after a couple of hours, I'm going to fade out and fall asleep with the table and that probably won't be doing you a lot of good at that point. My wife kicks me all the time. So anyway, that plus the, these items that I'm going to talk to you about here are things that I've already shared, but I'm going to talk to you about and I think we're already sort of implementing a little bit. But I want to make sure that these are items that will probably appear in your council rules and I want to make sure that he was counsel in total or in agreement with all or part of these recommendations too. So with that in mind, I'm going to continue through my short list of things. So the other piece, of course, that we have in here and you see an example of that attached is the council, the future pending city council agenda. So that's our best understanding of what's going to happen probably over the course of the next six meetings. So that's our best understanding of what's going to happen probably over the course of the next six meetings, over, in this case, three months. And then beyond that, what we see as future items that will get added outside of that three-month window. So that'll be on the bottom of the page. So the way this tends to work is the first, the first two meetings fill up pretty quickly, fill up with items. You can see what's planned. When we see that we seem to be getting a two-fold, we start looking at examples. How do we bump things to a later meeting so that we can still honor what I believe is should be a window of operations for you, which is a couple of hours. I firmly believe that you should, you know, two hours after you start your meeting, you should gavel to a close unless the council together thinks that you need more time to act. And then I would urge you to act in half-hour segments so that you have to continuously vote on extension. That's just what I believe you can choose to do as you please. And again, that'll come back to you within the proposed rules. So with that in mind, we, we will do our future agenda planning so that a two-hour segment is roughly covered. It'll be a little trickier when we run into hearings, public hearings, quasi judicial hearings. Those are things that sometimes can be out of your control, certainly at the length of testimony. I see the, I saw in your, in your cover that you're trying to limit that to half an hour. I'm not sure that, you know, at the end of the day, that's always going to be practical or possible way to label. So the city attorney can weigh in when that time comes. So that's the agenda planner. You can see that again, the first six are kind of accounted for you. I will note that your December meeting, your second December meeting has been canceled because that's your tradition, but then we've gone ahead, calendar back in for a December 15th meeting, which is going to be dedicated, if we stay on track, with the interviews and hiring of your next city manager. That's what that's about. I have talked about the two hours. I've suggested to you that you not change the order of public comment, but that you limit it to a total of 30 minutes and that you allow three minutes per, no more than three minutes per comment or per person at the microphone. Started that tonight. I think that's a work, obviously the person that we're fine, but I think you should continue that. I think most people get said what they need to get said in three minutes. If people want to, either way, you can limit it to 30 minutes. If it looks like you have a large crowd of folks, if you ask people to politely say that they support a prior comment and they can identify themselves, but there's no need to repeat that comment directly to help you manage your time. But either way, at the close of 30 minutes, I would suggest that be done. If you want to continue that to the end of the meeting, you want to do so, or you can ask them to come back at another meeting to continue those comments, assuming, because you're talking items that are not on the agenda anyway. Just, you know, that's a tough one, but I think it's one that is worth for many councils, many councils that I've worked for. I think I've covered all, oh, the other thing to help you manage your time, staff reports. You'll note tonight that the staff reports are a little shorter than normal. I've asked that we not read into the record, though things are already in the record. You have a copy of those staff reports in your packets. Assume that you're reading those packets ahead of time, those are available to public to, to read online in advance as well. You may have the staff provide some short summary in addition to just ask if you have questions. I don't think it's necessarily a good use of your time to have a staff report repeated to you. My news matters may be different because you maybe have to create a record that's a little different. I believe just a written record carries our expert on that. She can weigh down that as well. So other than that, as far as the council business management piece, then we talked to a few other things, some might, my list of items. You've received nine or eight sets of minutes, I don't recall these, nine sets of minutes. We have, we talked to you Friday and I think without objection, you were agreeable that we switched to what is required in law, which is summary minutes, rather than trying to be a verbatim transcript of what is being said, because we never really accomplished that. It creates opportunities for error, misinterpretation, remembering that it's one person's report lens who is taking the minutes. So by doing summary minutes, we capture the essence of a conversation, which is what is required and plus the motions by name of those that made it in the second, and how they pass, whether it's unanimous or the vote count, or the, if you list out the names in your record, then that'll be there in minutes as well. So it is, we of course also have video record of, of the meetings. The minutes, the written minutes have to, have to be kept forever. So that'll always be there. The, the, the video record is kept for, the legal minimum for keeping those is a year. Comment was raised on Friday, well, for historical reasons, we should want to keep those longer. I will tell you two things. One, that those things are posted on YouTube. Anybody that wants to download those, those video records can do so at any time, during the time that they are, as long as I guess they're up. And two, it takes an awful lot of storage and a very large cost ultimately to retain videos for a very long time. They are big, they are big files. So it's not, it's not in your interest in cost management, or frankly, is your interest in having two sets of records of a meeting that, that people will use for comparison purposes, perhaps in court. Your official record is the minutes that you voted. So that, that is the response to, of course, that was raised on Friday. We are not beholden to taking those down after a year, but we are beholden to keeping them for at least a year. So if, if, at your pleasure, we'll look at, at sort of test, we'll look at the test of time, see how that works for you. So what, beyond that, we had, I think I want to report on, well, you mentioned the Southland. We have, really quickly, we have leaf pickup in process. I don't know, I know that was in your Friday report, but I just want to remind everybody that start this week. If you miss it this week because there's not enough leaves to shoot and shed, it's, it seemed like the trees are hanging on. Then we have, we have November and December scheduled, a week in each of those months before that pickup. You talked about the Halloween festival and I do have my heart near, near them, it's a holiday. That said, we also, the library has, has doing something on Dia de los Muertos as well. So if you want to see a little bit of an alternative celebration, it's Mexican holiday. And they're doing some, some interpretation of that holiday over at the library, the community center. So that'll be, I don't know if that's new in the community, but it's something that I like that. And then finally, I think a little bit to the point that you were making on property, perhaps if I understood you, it wasn't entirely clear, councilman, there. We are, we will, on, within our current budget, we will be starting work on feasibility work. I don't know, another tool within, in the, in the tool just for economic development and community development and, and lighted development. So that's, that will be underway as soon as we commit that contract. That's what I have for staff report and the two items that I had on my.
Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Klein. I wanted to clarify my comments on Friday morning as it pertains to the minutes taken. My agreement to have a, with the, the proposal to have a summary of minutes was contingent on that there be a complete record, maybe transcript. That's what we're, we're talking about, some of the technologies that were available. I agree on the ability to go back and, and see exactly what happened. You do lose a lot into, I think, Councilor Mary Day's point, from the historical perspective. You, you lose a lot, you lose almost all the context going back. And that's really helpful to understand, you know, how we got charter changes over the years and different, different things that comes through in that. So I would just wanted to qualify my support of, okay, if we are going to a summary minute style, record-keeping, that I would still like, you know, that, whatever the technology allows for, that doesn't put a cost burden on the storage. And I think we're going to get back to what is the thing that I'm unaware of is what the implications of this dual record, what kind of scenario are. So I was looking to hear more about that. Otherwise, I would prefer to stay the way that we have, keeping the records.
Councilor Mary Day.
Is there any cost in maintaining our YouTube channel?
I'm sorry.
Is there any cost in maintaining our YouTube channel?
No, I don't believe so. So I think that's, that's.
So we could have them exist as long as YouTube allows, right? They could also change, decide to go out of business or delete our file, but.
Councilor Flack.
So I, I thought I heard you ask for feedback on the.
I did, but I forgot to circle back.
No, no, and that's great. I guess, you know, as far as charter amendments go, I think of the charter kind of as a nonprofit set of bylaws. You know, they're supposed to be 50,000-foot, you know, generic. And our council rules are the ones that are supposed to kind of drill down more of that detail, I think you're talking about. And I, and that is on ours, so I would certainly support it. But you know, there's a cost of going back to the voters and, I mean, if there's something in there that's problematic, I certainly would bring that up. But I would not want to do it just to do it because of the complexity of lamenting our charter. But council rules absolutely, one question about, are we still going to have the 30 minutes per item action item? Because that's been my big heartburn, is that in that one meeting, there was four and a half hours of potential feedback from the community, which is wonderful. Don't get me wrong, I want the feedback, but we also have the regular business of the council that needs to happen. And so I would encourage us to have work sessions when, then, when there's more comments than, you know, that. But I would just have one session for items on and off the agenda for up to whatever time period necessary. And then I also would encourage Councilor Irvin to speak with you, because in the first draft, there was some concerns, so that maybe we can get those addressed as we go forward. I'm trying to think. Oh, the other thing, I, I love your putting items on the agenda. And I think you also mentioned in our agenda, having estimated times of when we'll complete those items so that we can kind of keep track of where we're on time-wise. But I did notice there was a work session on here that I had not heard about yet. And so I'm a little concerned if we're not paying attention enough to this sheet, that we might not get that in, in our calendars. And I'm, I'm a pretty busy guy and if my alarm doesn't go off telling me I got a meeting, I run the risk of missing it. So I would say if there are work sessions, because like on the November 13th, that 5:30 work session, I did not have in my calendar. And so I think that making sure we're aware of something that's outside the norm also would really be important.
Understood.
Councilor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Soski. I wanted to piggyback on that and I saw that we have a special meeting on December 15th from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And I just wondered if those times were correct.
They are, well, they are, that's a window of time. So you'll have actually two meetings that day, likely as not, if everything goes per plan. You'll have an executive session to, one, conduct interviews of, of the candidates and also to review the, the, the results of the interviews from stakeholder groups the day prior. And then you'll follow at some point with, and you'll all have, if you find a candidate that you find attractive, you'll also have a conversation about contract terms. And at some point, you'll come out of that, go into a regular session. So I don't know if that's all doable in one lengthy meeting, when, you know, you could probably do that and wrap it up in the morning, wrap it up in the afternoon. I, I wanted you to block off this time for now until you have an opportunity to refine that into a more.
Awesome. I, I would like to just echo that if it deviates from the norm, that we converse about it and pull on our calendars and actively put them in, just to make sure that we actually get them. Which I think we've been given some of these dates already, but we haven't necessarily talked about it and put it in our calendar. So yeah, this, this is awesome. Thank you so much for putting this together. I love the transparency and the communication.
Clearly, we need to give you more of a heads up than just this form, but yeah, thank you both for pointing that out.
Councilor Flack.
And I apologize, I forgot one suggestion too. On our item tracker, I suggest a roll session. So that's something we didn't actually do at the beginning of the year. I think, you know, because as I'm thinking about each priority each one of us has, which is, you know, passionate and loved doing it, I would much rather have us, you know, do a shotgun throw, everything on the board and then prioritize so that we're actually also effectively at, you know, limited financial abilities and, you know, and kind of, like I said, come up with a prioritization of those things. Obviously, we want to keep this tracker available for things that come up. But I think that a more global approach is something I would suggest. I would suggest we also don't do that until, you know, it's resolved.
Well, I think until your next city manager is appointed as well.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So it would be very helpful to me, if Mayor, if we could go through these items. Maybe, I think the first one's fine, but I think if the next four, as I have, at least I have four down, if we can confirm or not confirm that you want these on your, on your.
Absolutely.
So. Let me ask, so I, so the first one was the community conversation. What is, is it a, is a council direction that we add this to the, to this list? And then with an understanding that this would be something that staff could not help with you until the recall is resolved, one way or the other.
What is, what is meant by a community conversation? What's the context specifically? Is this the one that we've been talking about?
I would rather wait until it's resolved. I, as much as I think it's a valuable conversation to have, I think staff should probably better wait until this break. And there's also legal cases that are, you know, involving some media house.
Good points.
I still find it's a very burning issue in our community and the anger and frustration seems to be rising. I think if we put it off, that might continue to rise. Just saying.
Let me add, you know, this is, this, this list of things in no way limits what you do in your own time and your own way. This is strictly what is city, city business, city, and particularly city staff and city resource. That's my focus. If you choose to do something on your own council, for instance, nothing about this prohibits that.
I'd also like to see us, before we move on, I'm sorry, circle back to the time allotted that we're talking about, 30 minutes. But if we get to the end of our meeting and we haven't hit our two-hour point, I would like to make it available for people to continue, especially if we have a hot item on our agenda and there's more people that want to speak. And if we're not to the two-hour minimum, I'd love to see us go back to that. And then we also talked about the possibility of not even doing a sign-up or how we used to. Or do a sign-up, let those people speak first. And then if there's more people, if something spurs an interest that they hear at council or someone else's comment, it would give them the opportunity to speak. And then one more, we talked about the possibility of not listing an address. Because I, I do have some fear about people knowing where others live and, and if they could just say, I'm a resident of Cottage Grove and I don't believe there's any legal issue with that. Or is it?
So I think your rules, I remember looking at that the last couple of months and that there was something that says individuals who can't identify their, identify by address, name and address.
That's just in our council rules, Ms. Conley, so that could be changed.
Could be changed.
So I would love to see that happen.
Councilor Irvin.
Did the context that I recall, I believe Mr. Boone had brought it up, was that, that was a legal requirement when there's a quasi judicial hearing, but.
It's really, yeah. I mean, because those individuals need to receive notice of the decision. So it's critical for staff to have that information. If it isn't announced publicly, that's, we'd need to find a different way to.
We talked about possibly still having a sign-up that's not public so that it satisfies that requirement. But we hadn't got full clarity on that. Be in support also of, of that. I know we've had some people give testimony about people showing up at their house and harassing them after a meeting, so.
I think what we can at least draft up for you, something that says where it's not otherwise required by the type, the nature of the business being deducted, that it would not have to show. They would just have to identify if they're resident, non-resident, or what their interest in Cottage Grove is, business or whatever.
Thank you. Counsel Flack.
I could live with the having it on the sign up, but, you know, my name and address or, you know, agenda or website, I mean, you know, I fully expect those, you know, to tell where they are and what they're at. So, you know, obviously, you want the behaviors. And I'm fine with it if it's just on your side, but I would not want to see that.
Counsel Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo what Counsel Flack just said. It makes me a little nervous to receive public comment to base our decisions for city business based on comments from people who may or may not even pay city taxes. Not that the comment isn't valuable, we can still hear them, but it's going to be weighted for somebody who actually lives within the city. So I agree, I think that we should still have it, but I'm okay with it not being in the microphone. I'm okay with it just being on paper, because that still goes into public record, but it doesn't have to be announced.
Counsel Irvin.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this underscores the need to have a full discussion about our council rules, because it is in the rules that a public member desiring to address, let's see, the person's name and address shall be stated for the record. I personally, I think it can have a chilling effect if I have to come give public comment and say my address. I understand that people are going to know where we live, because we've chosen this level of public awareness. I would like to hear from, also, because I can't, I don't have Google Maps in my brain, so I would like to hear people say, you know what ward you live in, you live in city limits or not. That would be sufficient, unless there's a reason legally that people need to tell us where they live.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Do our best at drafting something. I don't think we're going to quite get the, split the baby quite exactly right, but we'll get your first draft, and you can have that. Oh, the next one down, I'm sorry, whether or not you want us to conduct a charter review.
Counsel Irvin.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have the charter in front of me, and I did not see any of the issues that you brought up that were addressed in the equity in your charter. That was, that was a really great session, and I appreciated that. But that, I didn't see any issues or reasons to bring that up. And I just want to point out that the county has embarked on a charter review, because they're required, what, to review it every 10 years? Our charter, I don't see that it requires when, it doesn't say you have to review it at this time, because that would seem to be arbitrary. I don't see any need to revisit it at this time, and I know that the county has spent over a year revisiting that, and staff have spent a lot of time with the whole charter review committee, and they're still not done.
Counsel Irvin.
That was my only question. Would there be, is there in the charter a provision for mandatory review? And it appears not to be, so. I think our comprehensive plan is where we should really be reviewing and bringing it up to date.
Counsel Savage.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm happy with this being the review, just putting our eyes on it and saying we're still okay. That satisfies, I think, what the point of the session was, so I'm happy with that.
And I can say that I was, I think this was my first project for the city, was working on the charter. And it was, to the extent possible, modeled after the League of Oregon Cities Model Charter with your individual provisions, your unique provisions baked into it, but we worked hard to make sure that it was gender neutral, didn't have dates. And the league hasn't issued a new model charter. There's three model charters that the league has issued. This is based on the third most recent version, if that helps.
I think I'm reading that that one comes off the list for now as well, so I have two or three are off it for the moment. So the next one with, is generally about public health funding, or about public health. Obviously, that's pretty vague. But I think something along the lines that you want us to advance, at least to continue or have a more enhanced discussion or investigation out there in terms of things that cities can do. I mean, I'm not being very articulate, so I'm not quite understanding what concept that you're trying to propose.
So I gathered my data from a city councillor who is in Selects, and she was able to work with their local community care organization and receive funding for their unhoused site. It didn't cover the entire cost, but it was a little drop in the bucket, which helped them with their site. So my suggestion is, since we have kind of a finite amount, if we don't have anything after June of 2024, we're kind of, we're done. It doesn't hurt anything to go down that route, see if there's funding from our community care organization. There could be, and there may not be. I don't know.
Counsel Stenett.
Thank you. Do you think we could broaden that include exploring all avenues for funding for, because we are facing that deadline? It seems to make a lot of sense.
So can I be clear, what's the target audience of the health, the healthcare provision? Are we looking at, is this for the homeless, the unhoused? Is that what we're talking about, or is it community wide, is this?
Funding for the unhoused sites, specifically the managed site, the unmanaged sites, just funding in general.
So to provide more health, to provide more healthcare funding in those areas.
Seeing if there is funding. But it sounds like what Counsel Stenett is clarifying is just not limit ourselves to the community care organizations, but continue reaching out in general to find it. I don't know if I reiterated that.
Absolutely.
So as an example, the governor came up with the all-in funding mechanism in the last legislative session. It does not support existing shelters. So, you know, mainly, you know, looking and lobbying, you know, the legislature to make sure, you know, that that really, you know, loud and clear, hey, this funding, you know, should be used to keep, you know, facilities from closing as well. I think that would also be a key piece. So I think we're looking at grant writing, or whether, whatever opportunities to close that funding gap. Does that sound?
Yes.
I do want to remind council, and hopefully this is happening, that that was part of Carry It Forward's contract, is that they go after future funding. So I have, I know that they receive some. I don't know how much. We haven't gotten a report on that. But it's important that it's part of their contract, too.
Again, I know you're about to make a comment, but I want to, just to be clear in my mind, as I thought I was hearing two different concepts. Are we looking to fill the hole that is going to occur in June of 24? Is that really what we're talking about? Somehow keeping Carry It Forward, or at least to keep the managed site funded, since the all-in funding is not, doesn't appear to be, doesn't appear to be available to us.
We don't, you know, we don't qualify for that.
So is that, is that what I'm looking at in terms of this?
Seeking funding to help with our unhoused sites.
Okay, we're not looking at, we're not looking at just a healthcare program.
I had suggested working with community care organizations, and Counsel Stenett is mentioning seeking any avenues. So any and all, and.
I think what I'm hearing is keep the site operational beyond June 3rd.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so looking for any and all resources that could make that happen. Is that, that helps me understand what you're trying to call it.
Thank you. It just seems to me that we're going to need to explore the feasibility regardless. And just, we need to get, it's helpful to start now and not be sort of flat footed when the governor needs to make a decision about their unhoused. So it's kind of.
I think I understand what you're promoting. So is that sort of a concern? Does that feel like that's a majority or consensus of council?
Counsel Irvin.
I would assume that it's the majority. I guess I would just weigh in. My, my concerns as this breaks down is there's the protection of the use of public spaces. The mechanism that the council has arrived at a majority to do this is what we have right now. I have not been in support of that to this point. I am in support of the protection of the use of public spaces. And so I would support anything that goes toward that. So that's, but I, I'm not supportive of continuing what we're, the approach that we're taking. So I guess I feel like I need to clarify that. And then the other part is, as you break it down as well, I am also in support of finding ways as a community to meet, meet the needs of our homeless community, and those are experiencing all that's involved in that, just on that human level. But I also have parameters for how to think about that, and they come to, how do you measure success? How do, what is a successful measure of, of that, that help? And does, does the help, does the funding, does whatever comes actually work towards that direction or so that it's not a waste? And I know we've had this discussion about defining what success looks like, what, what the expected outcomes of our, our current strategy are, whether they're meeting, and I do believe it's two tiered, I believe it's evading a lawsuit, and and actually trying to help people in their lives rise up. So so it's a, it's a hard question to answer, to, you know, to support the pursuit of additional funding. Depends, depends on what it's going to be going toward.
Counsel Flack.
Actually, I was going to say something pretty similar, a little bit different drive and reasoning, but the same outcome, is that maybe we should broaden this conversation. If we don't get this funding, what are we going to do? Are we going to abandon the managed site? Are we going to increase the size of other sites? What is the plan? You know, and under any circumstance, so if we can't secure, because I've already said I don't support going into the general fund to support on the current project. So if we can find outside sources, that's awesome. I love your suggestion. But I do think we need to broaden our conversation about what are we going to do going forward, because that funding is not certain in our general of this framework. So how can we meet the needs of everybody, you know, the citizens who enjoy the parks and libraries, and also our citizens who own the signs of the house, and, you know, what can we do? I love measurable outcomes. Unfortunately, they're not always tangible. And so there needs to be some metrics in there that also look at, you know, somebody's well-being, and I don't know that you can articulate it in a formal way, but in a short bill. So that's, that's going to be a little more of a challenge, but I'd like, you know.
Counsel Stenett.
Thank you. I think that's why I suggested something so broad. I don't think, I think the conversation about whether or not to continue what we're doing or to do something else is going to be contingent upon what money, what resources we have to work with. It's a moot point if we can't fund anything. So I think that's why I was going to, just a broad and general search for funding and opportunities to make something happen.
Counsel Savage.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And just to clarify, Carry It Forward did get some all-in funding. However, they can't use it at our Cottage Grove site, because we don't qualify. So it is going to be other, other Carry It Forward sites. But with that being said, I think that you folks have articulated very well, kind of the intention, which is, what are we going to do next? If this isn't going to be it, then what is next? Do we want, you know, we do want to be able to follow the law, we do want to protect the parks, but what's next? And so it's, it can be a very broad conversation, and I'm okay with that. I don't, I'm not stuck on needing to make sure that it's for this specifically, but what's next and what's the funding?
So would it be fair to say that there's probably consensus around the idea that we should seek funding towards continuing to, to address this problem? Whether, whatever method you choose to do so in the future? Is that, almost hit the mark?
And to rehash the contractual obligations of Carry It Forward, make sure that they're doing everything that they're obligated to do.
Can I suggest you separate that into two different conversations, two different? Because that contract, I don't know when that contract comes up, but there should be a fair amount of opportunity to discuss who, if it's Carry It Forward or somebody else, or what standards they operate under. On the one hand, on the other hand, some, nothing happens unless you have a resource. So, I mean, absent resource, it's going away anyway. Is that fair to say? I think everybody, the city doesn't have it in its budget to do 300,000 dollars, or whatever it is, to continue the program in place. So we have to find that money, at least in the, so that you could have the next round of conversation, is how do you spend it?
I guess if I could re-articulate the concern, it's, it's either Carry It Forward doesn't have the resource or access to the same funding that the city would be able to pursue. And if that's the case, then it makes sense to direct the city to go after that other funding. However, if Carry It Forward has the same access, I don't want to direct city resources to do the job that they were contracted to do. I'd like to hold them accountable in some way by reiterating what's going on, saying, have you done everything that you can to re-secure? Since I don't know what the exact situation is, that's why I laid it out as kind of a common thread.
I think there's a consensus around, consensus around something, and tomorrow morning, I'll have a staff meeting, try to figure out what that is. But I think we're, I think, I think I understand the concept, so. Why don't we give, why don't we give it away, and get back to you, because this is, this isn't today's problem anyway. So we'll get back to you with what we think we understand, right? It goes on. And so that gets us to the very last item, and I think that was, I think that was, same, one in the same category as council rules, is that at some point here in the not too far future, but with a new city manager, hopefully, you'll want to have a goal-setting strategic planning session to, to get together and really figure out, you know, where you're headed as a community, as a council. Is that, okay? So I'm seeing all sorts of hat on it, so that's my consensus on that. So that's, is there anything else you feel that you want to add to this list for now? You have plenty of opportunity for second meeting. Okay. With that, I think I've covered mine.
Do we have a report from the city attorney?
Oh, boy. Do you? So first, just following up on the stuff that was discussed tonight, I understand the rules will be forthcoming. I understand, David, you don't need anything from me at this time, because you have the prior work. Okay. I do want to just point out that with regard to changes in public testimony now, before the rules are changed, you, the rules actually address it. It says comments are limited to five minutes or less with council approval. So to the extent that the council has already directed that they want to go from five to three, great, you're within your rule boundary. And it does set that 30 minute cap in the rules. On all public hearings, appearance of interested citizens at the beginning, or on any council matter, with the exception of quasi judicial hearings. So, which you can set the time on each speaker, but not a total time for public comment altogether. So I just wanted to cover that to make sure everyone knew. This isn't new, it's in your rules, and you're just implementing your rules. Oh, record retention. I also had a LOC meeting, so, so public officials met, not this last weekend, but the weekend before, or the end of that week. And then our city attorney conference was just this last Friday, which is a great opportunity to find out, oh, everybody's struggling with the same things. And here's a whole bunch of different ways to solve them. One of the points that was made was, don't keep records past their retention timeline. It is costly, it's burdensome, that can be, I'm not even really sure why, but there were sources of liability associated with that, potentially because there would be requests that would give rise to a claim that had the city stuck with its retention schedule, that wouldn't be there anymore. Now, whether or not to discard things that are current public records is completely a policy choice. But I just wanted to chime in, since we're talking about retention, that the word from the city attorneys was, get rid of those things that you don't have to retain. And so do with that what you will. So moving to the stuff that I was going to cover, the October 9th council minutes on page eight referenced a comment that I made that I think could be misconstrued. I don't want to discourage you all from asking me questions in the meeting. wanna discourage you all from asking me questions in the meeting. You may certainly ask me questions in a meeting. Just be prepared that I may not respond, and I may postpone my response until I have a chance to review materials in advance. So there was just a sentence that jumped out at me that it was like, don't ask Carrie questions. The Carrie said, don't ask Carrie questions, because she may not have those information at her fingertips, and I'm like, no, no, I, I understand that's what it sounded like I was saying. That's not what I was saying. To that point, on Friday's agenda session, I guess there were questions raised. David has addressed them to some extent with regard to a voter's pamphlet, and then a community forum with regard to the recall election. If you get to that point, my strong recommendation, as David has already said, is no city staff involvement, no city involvement. And the reason for that is because when the prospective petitions were turned into Mindy, at that point, political advocacy was prohibited of all city employees, staff. So the council can't direct staff to do anything, and David can't direct staff to do anything unless it's an official duty associated with the election, like certifying certificates. And then a community forum would be a great idea, not city-sponsored, however. It could be chamber-sponsored or various other city, um, community organizations where conversations can happen with regard to election arguments one way or the other. I just don't want the city to be a proponent, because it would be really sticky and almost impossible for city staff to say it wasn't involved in organizing that. And back on the voter's manual, the ballot itself, if it gets to that point, will have the, the proponent's statement in favor of the recall, and it will have the public official's response as to why they chose not to step down and why they should remain in office. And that's really what a voter's pamphlet includes. And so anyway, those are my thoughts on matters that were raised at Friday's agenda session. Unfortunately, that gave me time to take a look at, you know, the appropriate resources. Let's see, dun, dun, dun. I can't read my notes. Duncan v. Portland was raised. I just wanna be really clear, that's the case in it's challenging Portland's time, place, and manner restrictions. And I, I know that we all are waiting with bated breath for courts to issue decisions to clarify what we can and can't do, but I just have to remind you that the way that the state law is written, and even the constitutional law, is it's, is whether something is unreasonable is based on a city's facts. So Portland has 10,000 unhoused individuals, and trying to move those individuals off of all of the sites they may be on, but every, you know, every evening or every morning, might be unreasonable, whereas it might be reasonable in Cottage Grove. Or it might not. I just don't know. It really depends on the facts of your situation. And as, as we went past that July 1st deadline this last summer, every single one of my cities, I advised, I don't care what you would adopt today, you need to keep revisiting that on a daily, weekly, monthly basis to determine whether it remains reasonable based on your unhoused population. And so I just don't want us to get really invested in court cases coming down that may or may not be instructive for your situations. I think that's it, because the urban renewal question was addressed. And my office is getting our pumpkin on. So yeah, we're bringing it for your pumpkin contest, as we do every year. Can't wait.
Counselor Mary?
Thank you, Mary. So I had asked specifically about a voter information sheet to accompany the ballot. Because of my experience in talking with citizens in, in our community, if, if the citizens have not read a paper or looked at Facebook, they, many citizens have absolutely no idea that recall is even a possibility. And I've been surprised it includes teachers, people of, um, heavy community involvement that have absolutely no idea. And so it's my fear that if someone gets a random ballot mailed to them, like, what's this, you know, without some explanation other than when they open it up, if they have no, have not heard of anything like a recall, that they might just discard it. And so is there any way to have a clarification of what this, uh, this ballot is when they are received without, I know I have read the, the constitution and the statute that says the format that the ballot must be written as, and including the statements, but it's just some type of explanation to say, why is this being mailed to me, or something?
Well, hopefully that is clear from the ballot materials, but in advance of the election, in advance of that ballot coming out, none of you are prohibited. Elected officials have, can advocate for anything they want to. You should be getting the word out. You should be doing whatever you think is important for your community so that they will be able to vote in an educated manner. They'll be aware of what's coming, and then when they vote, they can feel like they were fully informed on both sides of the issue. But that is the public official's job. It isn't staff's job. The prohibition on political advocacy is completed once that vote is certified.
Yes, I'm very, it's very clear to me that, that that would be the case. It's, I was just wondering if there's any, I was trying to get ahold of the elections officials to find out, and wasn't there, they were closed because of an HVAC issue today.
That is, that is one of my recommendations, is contact the county elections.
Yeah, that, I was trying to do that. And then second, about the community conversation, I, I see that I've been, it's been misunderstood. I've been advocating long before the recall that we should have a conversation on community. A community conversation on homelessness, nothing to do with the recall. So that's.
Oh, okay. My apologies. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so I got, I guess I miscommunicated with our interim manager as well, but yeah, the community conversation on homelessness is, as we just heard on the council, is a very, you know, valid discussion to hold in, in the community. And so, yeah, it wasn't, wasn't a forum to discuss the recall.
Okay, and I didn't know who asked. I just was responding to the questions that were posed.
Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a thought on, when we were talking about the retention policy. Would there be anything preventing or the council from directing staff to, after, say, a retention policy, time, time has expired, to direct those resources to maybe a historical society for retaining longer? Would there be any issue with that?
You know, I'm gonna turn to your city recorder. Is there, are there set procedures on what needs to happen with records when they're destroyed after? And it would need to be, then, what I'm hearing is it would need to be a partnership with the recipient. You couldn't direct staff to say these will go X, Y, and Z, but you could ask to investigate that opportunity.
Yeah, that was, of course, everybody's gotta be a willing party here, but.
Right, and, and the council will probably do that via its public records policy, that I'm not sure what it says about retention schedules. I think it just says blandly, you're gonna follow the state archivist's retention schedules, with nothing else around that. So that is how the council would give direction to effectively to staff.
Maybe if there's consensus on that, we'd have a chance to review our, our retention policies to maybe check all the boxes.
I'm wondering, Recorder Roberts, do you know how large the, if we downloaded the YouTube file, how would that fit on a thumb drive? It's kind of a lower resolution. Thank you, yeah. Just for historical record, I'm sorry.
Counselor Flack?
You know, as I'm thinking about this, we might have it available in an MP4 format as opposed to on Google, because Google, unless you subscribe, will not let you download videos. So that whether it's, you know, a genie of utter, a historical society, or whatever, it's not in a format that you could get without having to pay for a service. And so maybe there's opportunity to work out a different, you know, file format that we post as well. That way, if somebody wants to retain it, can, you know, then the city's not obligated.
Anything else, Ms. Collins?
Items removed from the consent agenda. There's none. Item 12, executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by a governing body to negotiate real property transactions. The City Council for Cottage Grove will now meet an executive session held pursuant to ORS 192.6602E, which allows the council to meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave this room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session, except, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, council will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room.